Sort of nice the way your face, you had a halo.
Well, I appreciate that, Mark. Try to be as angelic as possible for you.
Are we live, Audra? All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the town, Ken, and select board meeting for June 6, 2020. First item on our agenda is on public input on non-agenda items. I understand that we don't have any of those, so I will move to item number two, which would be the approval of the select board minutes from June 2, 2020. Do we have any comments on the minutes? Allison?
Yes, thank you. I thought they were very well done, and I especially appreciated that Kendall even added Sarah Miller's, the link to her blog post in the minute. So, thank you for that. The only thing that I have, I'm pulling them up, is that under the section where it said that Allison, on the Village, the Village Green, it says McKellar is in support, but said she doesn't feel people need to ask to use the Village Green. I just wanted to clarify that under the circumstances described in the email to us about what they wanted to do ahead of time, under those circumstances, with, I didn't feel that it was necessary. Not that I never feel like events need to get permission from the select board, so I'm not sure how to, because the actual event, I really think, you know, in general probably did, because I had, it did have amplified sound and, you know, it's a, it's a, I just don't want to be on record saying that, that nobody ever has to ask to use the Village Green, so.
Perhaps you could just delete the portion that you disagree with and leave it out completely? And that piece.
How about McKellar stated that under these circumstances, it may, select board approval may not be necessary.
Perfect. But a motion with that one change, unless anybody else has any changes, I didn't see anybody else's hand, so.
Everything else looked good to me.
Okay, so let's make the motion with, Allison, why don't you make the motion with that change?
I to approve the minutes with that one change.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, roll call, vote. Taylor?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Bob, I four zero. Thank you very much.
Oh, Bob, just a quick note about our, our minute taker. Kendall unfortunately isn't going to be able to take select board meeting minutes anymore. It's just getting, it's gonna be a bit too much for her. So, I wanted to put the word out and say, anybody has any ideas for minute takers or knows anybody who's interested? We are looking for someone.
Oh, probably somewhat of a nightmare of a job. Kendall was really good at it.
She really was. She really is. Well, thank her for all that she's done. In any event, Audra, for all of us, we'll keep our eyes open. Moving on to item three, which would be select board reports. Taylor, do you have anything you want to report?
Yeah, a couple of, a couple of public safety items I just wanted to point out. First, some of us are aware, there was a Midcoast EMT basic class that was hosted this winter into the spring. There were thirty-two people in that started in that class and thirty-two that finished it. It was paid for largely with a grant from the Division of Labor, so it was available to Camden and to other towns that participated at a significantly reduced cost. So highly valuable. They, all the class requirements were completed by May 30th. There were ten members of the Camden Fire Department, four members of the Camden Police Department, four members of the Rockport Fire Department, two members of the Rockport Police Department, a firefighter from Hope, a member of the ski patrol, and a staff member in the town office. So it was really encouraging to see all of those people willing to put their time in outside of regular work to get that level of training for EMS licensing. It's gonna be really valuable to have that number of people in the Midcoast region licensed at that level. And particularly in COVID, it was a little extra difficult for them to be able to make that class work, given the CDC guidelines. So they worked every Wednesday evening for four to five hours and every other Saturday for a full eight hours through May. And were able to use Zoom and some small formed groups for their practical skills. They're figuring out with the state now how they're gonna do their end testing, but hopefully that will be figured out before the end of the summer, and then they'll take their written national registry tests. So I just want to say thanks to all those people that participated. It's valuable to have them taking an extra step to be licensed at that level. And thanks to Audra and Chief Farley for nailing down Division of Labor to help get that grant, and so we could get it, get it to us at a reduced cost. I think that will be really valuable to us in the future. The second thing was everyone's aware that there was a really sad fire at Lemon Morris over the weekend. Fire alarm came in late Saturday night into Sunday morning. And while I know there'll be some work to get things back to normal over there at Rumline, the thing that I do like about what happened this weekend is, late in the night, you know, our, our first response system worked just the way it was supposed to. And I think if you read Lemon Morris's statement about what happened this weekend, and some comments that I heard from the Fire Marshal Ops investigator from yesterday were that the fire could have been significantly worse and could have caused millions in damage, but everything worked the way it was supposed to. Our firefighters got there quickly when the fire alarm came in, and with the help of our mutual aid partners from our nearby towns, they were able to put a stop on that fire and keep it from becoming significantly worse. So while it was, it's gonna be difficult for them to get things going back again at Rumline, I'm thankful that in the middle of the night, people that were responding and they were able to do exactly what they were supposed to do and keep the damage to a minimum. So again, a big thanks to our first responders on that one. That's it for now, Bob.
Thank you very much, Taylor. Allison?
Yes, I am going to share my screen real quick, because the big thing coming up that everybody tends to miss each year, let's see if I can get it here. Well, if you go to the Midcoast Solid Waste website, it's Household Hazardous Waste Day is coming on Saturday. So that's gonna be 12:30 to 3:00, and this is your opportunity to get rid of all these things like paints and chemicals, and there's a whole long list of things on the Midcoast Solid Waste website. There is a cost to some of that, and there are some rules that we have to follow. But it is really important that we try not to be having this kind of stuff in our general waste stream, because all of our household waste that, you know, normally goes in yellow bags, that goes to EcoMaine, and it gets incinerated. And they have really good pollution control systems, but it doesn't get everything out. And so it's important that, you know, things like paint and floor sealers and, you know, any kind of pesticide, all of that stuff should, should go to this one day. So that's gonna be this Saturday. And check out the Midcoast Solid Waste website or call for more information.
Thanks, Allison. Good reminder. Marco?
Thanks, Bob. I have a number of things, as always. First off, obviously, you know, most people are aware that the brown-tailed moth is a serious problem. We mentioned, I think it was last week, that the town has treated a bunch of trees as much as the town is able to do. But the moths are out and they're bad, and the rash is bad, and my family is suffering from it. And I wanted to let people know that we talked to the doctor's office today, and there is a gel available now by prescription at the pharmacy at Penn Bay Hospital. We just picked some up a little while ago to help with the itchiness and the rash. So if people are suffering, you know, please, you might want to get a, talk to your doctor, get a prescription for the gel that can hopefully help with the, with the problem, because it's severe, it's a severe problem. So just wanted to make note of that. I also wanted to, two other things I wanted to talk about. The first thing is, I feel like I made a major mistake in a meeting a while back. We talked about, I, I made a decision to put short-term money over long-term, and I regret it, and explain what it is. This week, going through the press, as I do every week, I noticed at the, talking about the softball league that's around locally, there's a story, I think it was in Village Soup, Midcoast Coed Softball League has finalized its list of teams and scheduled for 2020. The league, formerly the Camden Adult Coed Softball League, will see so on and so forth. The games also will include familiar and new field locations. The Camden Snowball, essentially a base of operation for the league for decades, is not in the mix for games this year. And that's because of a decision we made. We were encouraged to look at short-term money. Well, why are we giving the field away for free? And, you know, it's a municipal field, it's for people to play. I never had to pay money to play, play on baseball fields or something like that. And because even though it was a small charge, the charge that we initiated for use for the league for the thing, they decided to move after years and years of being the Camden's, Camden Softball League. They, they've moved, they're using other locations, other municipalities where there's no charge. And it's a loss. And the reason I put it about short-term money, you know, it's, I live near the Snowball, and I wish to go by and see those teams play on weeknights. And you know that after, you know, a game or something like that, a lot of people will drive into town, go to dinners, go to restaurants, go to a bar perhaps, you know, and, and visit the town. And we have driven all those people off to other towns and other communities that are welcoming them more than we would. Maybe for next week, I would like to relook at the, Audra, if you'd make a note, I'd like to relook at the charges we made for usage of our fields and rediscuss that, because I think we made a mistake. The last thing I want to talk about, the last few, last few times I've been talking about COVID-19, the virus that's been going around. And as I go downtown, I see more and more people not wearing masks, and I have a couple of things to say about that. And again, I'll, I'll say that I don't pay attention to opinions and posts and social media and stuff. I try to look at the science of the virus. And the latest statistics, just in, you know, states, a number of states, just versus two weeks ago today, two weeks ago, some states are up 158%, 156%, 151%, 144%, etc. There are, I think, seven, seven states that are over 100% gain in case, in just the last two weeks. Now Maine has been very fortunate. We are in the bottom seven of states with cases. We've been very fortunate. Knox County has had very few, and we're lucky about that. But I want to read something from the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences, which is the official journal of the National Academy of Sciences. It's a report that came out, first published June 11th, and really quickly, we have, this is the significance. We have elucidated, there's a fancy word, the transmission pathways of the current coronavirus 2019 by analyzing the trend in migration measures in three epicenters. A result showed that the airborne transmission route is highly virulent and dominant for the spread of COVID-19. The, our analysis reveals that the difference with and without mandated face covering represents the determinant in shaping the trends of the pandemic. The protective measure significantly reduces the number of infections. Other mitigation measures such as social distancing implemented in the United States are insufficient by themselves in protecting the public. Again, if everybody wears masks, it's the law, it's what all of our retailers are requesting. We would, we would bring a lot of care and eliminate a lot of concern to the people that are in this town, as we have more people visiting. So I implore everyone, the masks are there not to prevent you from catching it for most of the masks, the non-990 and 95 masks, they're there to prevent, if you happen to be a carrier unknowingly, prevent it from getting to other people. It's your care for other people is the reason we wear masks. I just wanted to put that out there once again. It's important. That's it for me, Bob.
Thank you very much, Mark. I don't have anything at this moment. We'll discuss the interview stuff later on the agenda. We can cover some of that there. Audra?
Yes, so I just wanted to remind everyone that we have ballots available. So if you have not requested an absentee ballot, please, or absentee ballots, because it's for the, you know, local elections, town meeting that we're doing all by secret ballot, school district, as well as the state primaries, please request an absentee ballot, please vote absentee. You're going to really thank yourself for doing so. Not going to the polls is a good thing. Not only is it safer, it's way more convenient. This year, if you, if you have to go to the polls, if you have no other option, I just want to warn you, you are going to have a wait because of the protocols around what we're gonna have to do in terms of elections. So please, please, as many people as possible, request an absentee ballot, vote absentee. Reduce the numbers and the lines that we have at the polls. Oh, I would also say, we've got a number of construction projects going on in town. I don't even know where to begin. There are so many. So if anybody has any questions, Dave St. Laurent is here right now. So that would be a good time to, you know, ask questions, get like a quick update. I honestly don't, there's just so much going on at once.
There is. Question on your ballot question, issue just discussed. Some people asked me a question today. Is the, one, is the school ballot printed yet? And if not, and somebody has already received an absentee ballot, will they be receiving a second one?
The school ballot is printed. We're all, we're putting them all in the same envelope, from what I understand. So all of that is gonna go out at the same time when we receive those envelopes from the state. Is that correct, Janice? Am I missing anything?
Janice, did you hear that question?
Janice, you're on mute.
Yeah, she's on mute, but I don't think she heard us either. Well, the question, I thought that the people, some people received absentees a while ago, but I didn't think these.
They requested them a while ago, but only, yeah, yeah. Which is great. You can, you can keep, keep requesting them. You can keep, you can come in and vote early. We have.
That's right. Yeah. That is, we're just waiting for the state envelopes to show up.
Oh, I see. For mailing purposes?
Yes.
So nobody's received an absentee yet?
No.
That wasn't my understanding, but okay.
A while ago, but.
All right. With that, we can move forward on to our next item, if that's okay with everybody, to a consent agenda, which is two items. We have a request to approve the following Vittler's license renewals. The Bagel Cafe, Blackberry Inn, Camden Island, Camden Whitehall, Cuzzies, Hawthorne Inn, Maillan To Go Bistro, Scott's Place, Subway, The Jack, Timbercliff Cottage, B&amp;B, and Quarry Hill. Second item is request to approve the following lodging establishment license renewals for Blackberry Inn, Camden Whitehall, Cedar Crest Inn, Hawthorne Inn, and Timbercliff Cottage's B&amp;B. Are there anybody, have any disagreement with those two items on the consent agenda? Not hearing any, any of the same, I will hereby adopt it. Item five, we have two items for a public hearing for liquor license applications. I won't read them at this point, but just preface this with, as we have in the past, and the current situation, we've requested anybody to submit comments to the select board for consideration. As you know, we like to hear from the individuals of any pro, con, or just discussion about any liquor licenses, or in any, in this case, or in any public hearing. But given our current situation, we will, we'll just ask for, Janice, did we receive any comments from the public on these applications? Janice? Janice?
I think there's a delay in what she's hearing.
Okay. I'll presume there isn't any until she confirms that and revert to select board discussion for the, let's see, what do you have? We have Mason J. Benison doing business as Maillan To Go Bistro, new establishment at 56 Elm Street for a Class One Restaurant Liquor License.
No, we did not.
Thank you very much. And we have. And we have a, we can do these in one batch unless his comment, but we have another application for Jeff Chen doing business as Camden Island at 87 Elm Street. For a renewal. Maybe you should mute. Thank you, Janice. The second was Jeff Chen doing business as Camden Island at 87 Elm Street for the renewal of a Class 11 Restaurant/Lounge Liquor License. I revert to board questions. Mark?
I wanted to make one note. I made it after the liquor license, looking at the liquor license paperwork at the last meeting. And this week again, some of the applications are incomplete in terms of where they should be filled out. I know it's more of a state issue than it is a local issue, but I really think that we should be careful about sending along incomplete applications.
How are they incomplete?
Well, at the one I noticed today, the, the Jeff Chen, the Camden Island Liquor License has some answers not given, also does not have a written layout. You're supposed to do a drawing of the layout where it is, and that's not in there at all. It's a very incomplete license.
Okay. I think we should approve with those items have to be corrected. Allison?
Um, I should have brought this up, I guess technically during the Vittler license part of it, but I did want to check on where we are with compliance on the polystyrene ordinance for any of these businesses, if there are any known ongoing violations that haven't been resolved. Maybe Jeremy knows.
I can jump in. The only one that I was aware of that we had an issue with town was with Camden Island. And as I had chatted with, I think, some of you or most of you before, he had, Jeff had procured, I think like a whole truckload of new containers that were non-polystyrene. And he was working his way through his old stock, and that goes back a few months ago now, Allison. So I would, he told me at that time, and I did send a letter out, he did tell me that he, he thought he had at that time, I think a couple of weeks left or four weeks left. And if it was okay for him to use those before he transitioned to these new. And I believe he's transitioned to the new. I have not ordered takeout from Camden Island. So if someone has different information, certainly follow up and we'll follow up with Jeff. But as I believe is compliant at this time, I have not heard any complaints or concerns about it over the last three months.
Thanks, Jeremy.
We'll say, Bob, just the Maillan, it's Maillan Togo, not to go.
Oh, sorry.
That's to West End Front. He was in Searsport and in Waterville, and I think he's opening a new shop here.
That makes a lot more sense. Yeah.
Is that a spelling change or just a pronunciation thing? What, how's that spelled?
It's May with a, what do you call it? E, Lon, and T O G O Bistro.
So it's one word.
It's supposed to be one word?
Three words. A.
No, I got the first part. I'm not, the May and the, it's the Togo, to go.
Just Togo, not to go.
One, one word. Yeah. Okay. Do we have a motion for these two licenses?
I will make a motion that we okay the licenses with the reservation that the Camden Island license be filled out. His due date is June 20th, that his, his license be filled out properly before submitting to the state.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I also just want to say, I'm not picking on Camden Island. I do really like them. I do order from them, which is how I know that there have been problems, but I'm very supportive of the business. Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, we all are. We understand. This is a business we're dealing with, our business. Anyway, that said, any further discussion? If not, I'll go to roll call, vote, vote to Taylor.
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Hi.
And Bob, I four zero. Thank you very much. And with that, it will close the public hearing and go back to our agenda. Item six, which is a decision on the picnic tables on Village Green. Just as the, a couple of items tonight, we have some in our packet, some letters on a couple of items here, and they're there. But just to paraphrase those, we have two in this matter, and they are in the packet, one from Dennis McGrick. And I'm just, somebody's, I'm just gonna paraphrase a couple of points that are in there, not read the whole things, because they're in our packet. But Dennis was talking about how issues about violating intention of the Bach family. Swing an awful lot of feedback here. Won't be, won't be temporary in terms of picnic tables. That was a gist of his well-written letter, and also a letter from Eileen Curtis Kleinman, who is Chair of our Historic Resources Committee. And she was questioning whether the idea is congruent with the Bach deed and use restrictions. And she, she believed, the committee believed, I'm sorry, not just Eileen, it's the committee believed that it was not the intention of Mrs. Bach and for this kind of use. Anyhow, those, those two are in our packet. There was one communication we received today, I believe. And I'm gonna try to save my voice for the next round of reading. So the first name on the list of CCs was Allison. Would you read that one for us, Allison, please?
Sure. This is from Gideon Bach. It says, "To the Select Board of Camden, my name is Gideon Bach. Mary Louise Curtis Bach's symbolist was my paternal great-grandmother. I am writing concerning the placement of picnic tables on the Village Green. In the deed, as far as I know, it only states that there is to be no commercial activity. In my opinion, setting up temporary picnic tables does not violate this restriction. As a town, we have been beyond lucky to have had so many extraordinarily excellent restaurants. Even in good years, it's extremely difficult to run a high-quality restaurant, and especially in a town of our size. The restaurants in our area are struggling to make it work in the face of COVID-19. And unfortunately, some of them are facing the real possibility of closing, or are already in the process of doing so. Offering takeout is the only reasonable and safe route to success without putting their customers and staff at risk. I can't claim to know how my great-grandmother would weigh in on the issue of picnic tables on the Village Green, since she died when I was four and my memories of her are faint. I do, however, have the sense of her to be an exceptionally kind and compassionate person. I also know that she cared deeply for the people of this town. I also have the feeling that she would love to share some takeout from Long Green, for example, at a picnic table on the Village Green on a nice summer evening with loved ones. And my question is, who wouldn't want to do that?
Thank you, Allison.
For anybody who doesn't know, it was the Bach family who donated the Village Green Harbor Park, the land that the Yacht Club is on, the amphitheater, the library grounds.
Good point. Good point, Allison. Mark?
I have, you know, I thought about this. I've seen, I saw Dennis's letter a while back. We've heard from the Historical Society, but I go back to what I find is important, and I find that people are what we owe our allegiance to, not things, when it comes right down to it. And right now, in these times, people are hurting more than ever and doing remarkable things to try and keep their businesses open in terms of takeout. And this will not last forever, but I think it's important that we, we've heard from a number of different restaurants that. But I think it's important that we, we've heard from a number of different restaurants that need the help. And if we don't take care of our people, then we may have a Village Green that has an empty town around it. I mean, that's dramatic, you know, sentence, but we have to take care of the people, the people are what really count, that make up a town, that make up a community. That's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments from Taylor, was your hands up first?
Yeah, I think Mark said it very well. I, I'm supportive of it, I think, you know, simply from a practical standpoint. For a couple of reasons, you know, if there, if there are restaurants offering takeout only, if we can simply provide. Some structure in our public spaces to make it easier for someone who might otherwise not want to venture downtown and get takeout food and just give them a. Place to maybe make them a little more likely to go spend their money downtown. I, I think that that's a smart move and certainly from a safety standpoint, people eating outside in the open air. You know, on a deck in the Village Green at a picnic table. From a common sense standpoint, is safer than eating in a closed confined area with an HVAC. So it just, it makes good sense to me and I think it's a smart move temporarily.
Allison.
Yeah, I, I've had the opportunity to spend a lot of time on the public landing with the picnic tables that were put there. And I would say I was really impressed with town staff and the, the team of them that. Got the picnic tables down there so quickly and arranged them so nicely and. Really did it in a great way with the boulders and it, it, they kind of look like they've been there forever and I've. Also seen so many people enjoying those and to me, this. Certainly a byproduct of it, I, I hope that it, it can help businesses a little bit. But the, the primary reason for me is, is about residents, this isn't. I've heard from more residents on, you know, non-business owner residents on this issue than anybody. People want to be able to enjoy our beautiful time, whether it be visitors or residents, and it's safer to be. Outside, we have these amazing outdoor spaces, which is what all of this donated property was all about to begin with. Mrs. Bach, the Olmstead Brothers, all of their vision included getting. All, allowing the public access to green space, to public spaces, to making that available to everybody and. For some people, it's not that easy to, to sit on a, on a blanket and get up and down. It's, there are people that, that need to be able to sit down sometimes when, you know, you're walking around and. Older people or injured people or even just kids. And so I, I don't see this as just a help the, help the businesses. Kind of thing, it's just something that, that a lot of residents.
Okay, thanks, Allison, thanks. I, I agree with everything the three of you have said and I won't repeat all those, I, I, I see this as a. It, it's not, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a great. Check it, we're going to check it out, we put them in Harvard Park, we put them on the landing, we're seeing how things go, there's, there's no reason my mind wouldn't do it on the landing. I, I look at all of these as a temporary situation, now whether temporary is. A month, two months or three months, that we'll worry about that later on, but I don't see it as a permanent, we decide to go permanent, we'll have another discussion about. What we might do in these areas, I think it's logical, but I, I totally support it also. Mark?
I will make a motion that we approve picnic tables for the Village Green. With the condition that there are waste receptacles tied right in with the tables so that people don't have to go somewhere else. To throw their trash away, that's, that's a really important aspect of this. And that they also are temporary. I think the, the library Harvard Parker through October first, is that correct, Jeremy?
I think it's through the end of October.
End of October, so I'd like to put the same time limit on the ones for the Village Green.
For your second.
I.
Second. I've touched, second, any further discussion? Roll call, vote, Allison?
Yeah, I, they're just a one aspect of discussion, I don't.
Go ahead.
Re that, the, the library is a separate thing, the library board of proceeds gets to decide. About that, I mean, we, let's, let's revisit it and see how it's going, maybe it'll be some sort of a disaster before that, you know, I think we should. With the village, we should revisit it as, as needed, but not make a promise that. They'll be gone by any certain time or stay up or, you know, stay up until the end of October for that matter, so. But we'll just, I'll just vote yes to make it simple and we can talk about it later.
Clearly, I agree with Allison, I, I agree with that.
Well, I can, I can amend the proposal to revisit on a regular basis.
Taylor, do you agree with that second?
Uh, yeah, how about as needed?
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, motion to put the tables on and review as needed, made in seconded, roll call, vote, Allison.
Hi.
Tay- Taylor.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
And Bob, I four zero, thank you very much for that. We will move on to the, this, as discussion on this state program, which is the participation. To keep Maine healthy reimbursement program, presume you're going to lead us on that one, Audra?
Yes, so this is a grant program whereby the state is proposing to partner with municipalities. And it's really focused on municipalities with a strong tourist economies. To, it's, it's all part of the plan for. An alternative to the fourteen day quarantine, so on the state end, they want to encourage testing of anybody who's planning to visit Maine. As an alternative to quarantining in Maine for fourteen days to give, you know, a lot of people who are coming from out of state, the opportunity to. Have their vacations here. I was on a phone call with a bunch of other Maine communities, primarily Southern Maine communities like Kennebunkport, Kittery. You know, also Bar Harbor was on and they kind of talked about, you know, what if, what if they can't get tests in their. You know, home state or whatever, and there was a lot of back and forth about that, the details aren't completely worked out for that part of it. Another part was the random symptom checks, which looks like it's going to be done, or they're, they're trying to recruit. You know, students who are in the health professions to help out with that. But the third part is working with local municipalities on things. That a lot of us frankly are already doing because it's important for our own businesses and residents, so you know, that's the signage. Any expenses related to sort of COVID educational signage like around masks and social distancing. Would be reimbursable, you know, anything that we do as a town to push out information like that, whether it be. You know, some sort of media or social media campaign would all be reimbursable. Time spent by staff planning and implementing, a lot of this work would also be an expense that this grant program would cover. Any changes that we're making to the physical environment, like purchasing picnic tables and put them in public, putting them in public open spaces so that we can. You know, have outdoor seating areas for visitors and residents alike. Would be something that we could get reimbursement for. We talked a little bit about the. You know, the businesses that want to do some events and how that might require some reconfiguration of, you know, the, the pedestrian. Areas within town, particularly on Main Street. With closing off the parking areas and making that, you know, pedestrian areas and some of the, you know, barriers that we would need to make that possible. Those are the kinds of things that this program would cover towns for. So really, it's a pretty simple application process, we'd have to get something in by June twenty second. Stating, you know, these sorts of things the town of Camden can commit to doing. Like I said, a lot of it is stuff that we're already doing anyway, so it's, it kind of gives us a chance to enhance that a little bit. I think that the biggest thing for us is kind of determining who the main point of contact is going to be through internal discussions with department heads. We thought that the Planning and Development Director, sorry, Jeremy, would be the sort of conduit, so you know, Jeremy could kind of direct. Inquiries that we get from businesses, residents, potential visitors about, you know, where they would need to go. So he could say that's a police enforcement issue or that's a code enforcement. Issue or that's something that I can assist you with. So that's kind of, you know, the idea behind this program. Like I said, since a lot of the stuff is stuff that we're already involved in, I think it's kind of just figuring out what. What do we want to do that's a little bit above and beyond, is there additional ramped up signage, is there, you know, better ways that we can get information out to. Visitors about what is expected when they're in town, you know. Are there other sort of changes to the physical environment that we can make that are going to require some level of an investment to. Make sure that they're safe, so. Yeah, that's kind of the gist of the program and what it would, what it would do.
Just a quick question, Audra, would the reimbursement for, for Jeremy's time be included in that?
Yes.
Mark?
It's, there's so much, I read through the, the, the program, there's so much involved and yet the deadline for the application is Monday. We have a chance to get it be as complete, it's going to take a lot of time, we'd be able to get as much into this as we can. It's sort of hard to do it without knowing all that we're going to do.
Luckily, it's not a very involved application process, I think the budget portion of it is the most. Detailed part of it and I really want to strip it back to. We're going to commit to spending this much on, you know, advertising or graphic design. This much will be, you know, sort of physical. You know, amenities or infrastructure, whatever the case may be, and this much will be staff expenses and not. Too fussy with.
So as always, you've already thought it all out, so it'll be good, thank you.
Anyone else have a comment?
Uh, just curious what Audra needs from us, I think, I think it makes, there was an excellent explanation and. I think that hopefully looking back on this from in the next budget season, we'll. See that it hopefully helped keep our unexpected expenditures to a minimum, given that. We're not quite sure. How much extra we'll need to spend to keep things curbed and hopefully this will, this will lessen the impact on our own budget.
Um, do you need the board's approval for this application, Audra?
I would, I would like, I think it's good for the board to be the one to make the decision to approve us participating, I think it's good on a lot of fronts.
Mark?
I'll make a motion that we approve participation and direct Audra to fill out the application for the process.
Second.
Motion seconded, discussion. Roll call, vote, Allison.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Hi.
And Bob, four zero eyes. Thank you very much, Audra, it should be interesting to see how it transpires. Moving on to item eight, which is the approval of the EMS evaluation in partnership with the Town of Rockport and the Penn Bay Medical Center. Audra, Taylor, one of you two want to lead the discussion here?
Yeah, Audra, do you want to start it off?
Yep, absolutely, so we've been talking about sort of EMS and what Camden's. You know, sort of needs and desires are in terms of a service for a little while now. And really, it's kind of been one of those things where we're at a bit of an impasse where we need some idea in terms of, you know, what is the expectation? About level of service from the community, but the difficulty in figuring that out is that. You know, there are very few people in the community who, you know, even kind of understand. What, what an EMS system is and what it provides to the level. Where we would be able to get sort of the, the kind of feedback that you would need to think about or envision what our system is going to look like. So, you know, we were talking about this conundrum for quite a while with. You know, some of our partners in this, which are, you know, our neighboring towns who we jointly share service with, so Rockport, Hope and Lincolnville. As well as Penn Bay Medical Center, because the way that our system is set up, it's really. The interfacility transfers that come from Penn Bay Medical Center. Are half of the revenue for the service and the other half is the nine one one response to our four communities. So, you know, talking with our partners, you know, about what are we going to do to kind of move this conversation forward and get input into. You know, what, what the desired level of service amongst communities are as well as, you know, try to plan for our future. Led us to discussions with Tom Judge from Lifelight, who. Very active across the state in terms of EMS provision and, you know, worked with. Communities in Maine, specifically Saint George on answering this question with their own community, of course, very different community, different needs. But really, the process, I think, is what we can learn from. And Tom has colleagues in the industry who do this kind of work with communities to help them. You know, evaluate their current systems, figure out what the desired sort of level of service is from the community and then try to help. Answer questions around how that system can be planned going forward into the future, so it is meeting those needs. And this project would be that process put in place and so it would be split between. Ourselves, Rockport and Penn Bay Medical Center, the idea that, you know, we would each pay for a third of the cost. And, you know, it's, there's not as much public education as we originally discussed in this and I. I think that, you know, Tom Judge was, was very generous with his time and. You know, as somebody who's kind of impartial but involved in our communities because Lifelight is located in Camden. Was willing to work with us on that sort of public education side of. You know, explaining EMS services and what they are and how they're structured. So I think that, you know, this is going to be really important for, you know, awareness raising, getting, you know, sort of an impartial third party. Data that's collected and ideas on, you know, what, what we want to do in the future and how we could structure that.
Taylor?
Uh, yeah, Audra, I think summarized it very well. I think that, that this is an important step for us to take. To my knowledge, really hasn't been done in, in recent memory in Camden or in the midcoast area. You know, and it wasn't done, I, I went two thousand twelve, actually when we went to bid for our current contractor, I think it's important. To have a process like this that involves a community in a way that both educates them and then. Gets feedback from an educated public on what they expect from our EMS service, which will help to drive. The decision-making process of elected officials for, you know, what the best path forward is for our EMS system. I think it's important for us to really plan ahead as best as possible. And, and again, as I pointed out, Tom Judge, the Executive Director at Lifelight, is very generous. He hosted several meetings at Lifelight, there were also several meetings at Penn Bay for town managers and fire chiefs. I think that the involvement of Penn Bay is really a, an important piece of this, they've indicated to us that. It's as important to them as it is to the communities to receive the nine one one service, because it's, as one of them pointed out. EMS system, it's a system and the ambulance services is just one part of a spoke in a hub. And it affects everybody, so it's important that we're all on the same page and I think this is a good way to. One, keep us involved together and on the same page that hopefully moving forward, we'll be able to find a way to, to. Either improve upon or create an EMS system that works as best as possible for everybody and meets the expectations of our citizens. So I think, I think it's important and I think that this is a, a really logical next step in figuring out what our needs are.
Mark, you have your hand up.
Yes, give some, a little bit of background on this, if you look at that, there's an big information packet. In information in our select board packet, if you go on there, you'll learn a lot about the situation, what's happening. One of the things that was a surprise to me, and I've been involved in EMS for quite a long time, is. EMS services where fire and, and police are deemed essential and required by law. EMS services are deemed essential in only eleven states in the country. The only one in New England that's, it's a required service is Connecticut, which is a surprise. And so, and it states that most people's idea of EMS being a part of. You know, fire and, and answering in the same way that, that a fire department comes or police department comes is because of television. Because of what people see on television and it's not realistic to the problems that the EMS system is having in, in, in the country, particularly in Maine. Where we're more of a. to the problems that the EMS system is having in, in, in the country, particularly in Maine, where we're more of a rural state. So, reading up in the packet, reading the information, uh, you'll understand why this is so important for us to make this study and figure out the best way to move forward so that we're protecting our citizens, uh, in the best way possible.
Thanks, Mark. Allison.
I am so looking forward to this. I even just really enjoyed the information that was in the packet. Because as somebody that comes to this without a firm base of knowledge, um, of the industry and all of the variables in our local area, even though I've lived here my entire life and I've followed along more or less with news articles, um, I feel like I'm in sort of this constant game of chasing after kind of anecdotal information from different people who try to, you know, fill me in on a, a portion of what I might be missing or, and slowly this larger puzzle comes together, but, um, I know I really benefit from reading good quality studies and being able to see things in writing and kind of have it all laid out for me. So, um, I think this will be really helpful for us and for, um, residents and, I mean, really our, our main job is, is to be able to do a good job presenting all the options and all of the variables to residents in a way that helps them, weigh in or help us weigh in. So I'm highly supportive and especially the, having Penn Bay and, and, you know, the hospital and the Town of Rockport as part of this, um, is really great. So thank you so much to all who have worked on this.
Yeah, I'd have to agree. I, I look at this as what I call structured due diligence of looking at an area that needs a lot of looking at, because it's not black and white, it's kind of complex. Um, and especially if we, um, do, um, entertain any variables or variation of service up in the future. I think it'll help people understand a lot better why we're, why we're going in that direction, rather than making a decision about a contract to make a point by exaggeration. But that said, I did have one question. What is the cost to Camden alone for this study or evaluation?
So it would be $6,000 if we're splitting it three ways with, uh, Penn Bay.
Okay, good. Uh, and, and I know it's difficult to pick, because this is, we're kind of in an awkward situation right now with all the, uh, the pandemic going on, but, um, could we expect some results for this in three, six, nine months? Is it, or is even possible to say that right now? Taylor?
Did re, see, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Audrey. I was, I was going to comment, but go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, we should receive the report by December. I spoke with, um, but Tom Judge and Kevin McGinnis, we had an email exchange. Um, Kevin is the consultant that'll be doing the report and Tom is, you know, from Lifeflight hooked us up with, with Kevin. And I explained that we need to have, you know, we, the select board really needs to have this report by December because in January, that's when you need to make a decision on, um, what we're going to do with our current provider. And I think that, given, you know, we're on year two of a contract extension, um, having the results of this report would be really important for informing you about what you want to do moving forward.
Perfect answer. Thank you very much. And, uh, Mark.
You ready for a motion?
I was, I was just going to say that. Thank you.
Uh, I will make a motion that we, uh, approve the EMS evaluation, uh, in jointly with the Town of Rockport and Penn Bay Medical Center.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Not hearing it. Go for roll call vote. Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
And Bob, I four zero. Thank you very much. Good job. Be interesting to see how that comes out. Item nine, yes, sir.
Uh, one more thing about, uh, emergency services. I just wanted to let people know, uh, last week, um, a local search and rescue team, Coastal Mountain Search and Rescue was authorized by Maine, uh, by Mesar, Maine State, uh, Search and Rescue Approval. So we now have a local, um, well-designed, well, uh, now officially approved search and rescue team that will be responding to a lot of experienced people. I think twenty founding members will be responding to, that have worked with other teams, uh, north and south. Uh, will be responding to calls for search and rescue here, which I think is especially important as we get ready to open the nine-mile uh, trail on Ragged Mountain. So some good news, there's some people really donating their time and working hard to, to save people. So it's a little bit of good news that's just happened.
Very good news. Thank you, Mark.
I didn't, that, what is this? That's, it seems like.
Coastal Mountain Search and Rescue, just certified last week. Uh, I'm on the Board of Directors, uh, because of my former mountain rescue experience. Um, they'll be, there's no press on it yet, but they just certified last week and, uh,
Nothing to do with Coastal Mountain Land Trust.
No.
No. No different.
Well.
Yeah, they can respond to calls there because, you know, with the nine-mile trail out there, sometimes you might get a call. But we have some very well-trained people that will be, uh, responding in our region.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks very much. Onto item nine, which is the, uh, item we had tabled from the last meeting, uh, which is the discussion of, and our approval of the Snowball uh, covert replacement bids for which we received two bits.
Since I was the wrench and the spokes, um, I, uh, I appreciate the extra due diligence of, um, uh, Dave St. Laurent and Jeremy, um, who I know to be great erosion control allies. Uh, so I'm, uh, comfortable, uh, moving that we approve the bid um, and award that to, uh, JBI.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, and seconded. Any further discussion on this, uh, action? I'm not hearing it. Have a roll call vote. Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Bob, four zero. Thank you very much. Um, on to item ten, which has two items in it, um, on regarding town-owned property. The first of which is the discussion slash approval of the draft tannery, our tannery RFP. Um, again, um, we were, just as I did with the, um, with the picnic tables, I just wanted to paraphrase, or at least recognize that, um, the letters that are, well, were in the packet, uh, there were some added late, late today, but the, they, they are, those that have been in the packet for a while included Tom Resick's, uh, letter where, um, he, um, was referring to EPA restrictions and the grant and also the naming of the park, just to, just paraphrasing, not the whole letter, it was much more than that. Um, from the, uh, from Eleanor Mason Peters, talking about the timing and being, uh, questioning the timing of this RFP. Steve Gold questioning, uh, but, uh, uh, wording of the RFP and, uh, making comments there. And of course, Nina Holland, who was questioning the short notice on this potential action. Last letter that was in the original packet was a letter from Lehman Scott, who was the Chair of our CDEC Committee, uh, where he discussed the processes CDEC was involved in with regard to reviewing this RFP, including some, uh, you know, discussions with the public. Since that time, and now just to qualify, now there are four other letters that we've received. They are at this moment in the packet, but I'm not sure that the, every select board member's had a chance to see all of those. Um, it, and they, but they are for the public record going forward in the packet, so anybody can go back and look at those letters, but they are, and I'll mention them and, and, uh, to an extent, you need to read a few of them, but paraphrase others. One was from, uh, BD Parker, and I'm going to, uh, read hers. BD, and I quote, says, "I'm embarrassed that I have managed to stay out of the struggle to make a park of the site of the old Kennedy, uh, Camden Tannery. After it burned down, the site was mostly cleaned up. It seemed too painful to watch. The town waiting and waiting for, quote, 'they will come,' period. The lost industrial tax-paying work of the mills, very toxic of that, and, and never coming to watch the various attractive and ingenious plans designed and offered up for the park and site for successful resident farmer's market, only to be set aside over and over again with selling or leasing of the site surfacing again and again. I hope that if the site is to be sold or leased, that it only be for a corner section that does not infringe on the farmer's market site, which doubles as a park for the rest of the week." I think it's typed over there. Um, "That the existing park can be shared, that such sold or leased portion, whether for compact affordable housing or a discreet business location, should not infringe on the line of established street shade trees and the river walk, which must be respected and protected from any encroachment and construction damage. Such a corner section would best be made in the Crescent Corner between Rossin and Washington Street, nearest to the existing homes that could be accessed by a one-way drive from Washington to Rossin to minimize additional asphalt." Thank you, BD Parker. The, uh, second letter that we received, uh, was from Jeff Senders. Jeff says, "Dear Town of Camden Select Board, I write this letter in support of the town selling and permitting development of the Apollo Tannery Site in accordance with the 2008 Town Meeting Approved Redevelopment Work Group Report and Recommendations. The objectives of the March tenth, two thousand seventeen Tannery Work Group Report and as outlined in the proposed RFP before you. Provided on the following pages of the guidelines principles voted on and approved by the town at the two thousand eight annual town meeting, as stated therein, the Tannery Work, Tannery Work Group recommends that select board considers selling the site as a single parcel with development in accordance with our town-approved objectives." And, uh, Mark, uh, I'm sorry, Jeff Senders did in, in certain section three of the, of the work group recommendation, which is from the two thousand eight, and I'm not going to read all of, all of those. Again, they're in the packet for reference. A third we received was from, um, uh, Jeff Scott, uh, who is writing as a resident, not as is positioned as, um, Chair of the Pathways Committee. "I've been involved either directly or indirectly with disposition of Tannery property since two thousand two, when the Apollo Tannery first indicated they were not going to pay their property taxes. As we all know, since then, they have been in at least two workrooms for them to guide the town decision, as well as countless meetings, presentations, and news reports. A first, as frustrating as the process has been, I think we've done a good job as a community, quote, and select board, navigating all the issues rolling around the property, and like to thank everyone for their reverence. This RFP should reflect all that history and community energy, as well as the evaluation, uh, evolution of that input. For the most part, I think it's, it does a good job. The one key area that you, you hear concern about is the public process, the original Tannery Report from two thousand eight, which provides guidance, uh, recommended to sell as a single parcel. As far as I understand, made no consideration for public access. Since that report, the part of the community engaged in this dispu, disposition has moved to the, to the opinion of desiring greater public access as part of development. So would like to sell or lease only a portion of the property. To compound that community concern, the RFP clearly states that only preference would begin to plans to consider any of the guidelines. Preference will only be an issue if we get lots of proposals. Even if the recommendation of the more recent Tannery Work Group included, these recommendations would only be considered in a competitive situation. The alternative of mandating all guidelines is unworkable in an RFP situation. In the end, I think what we all have to do is trust the process and each other, and of course, stay engaged. Besides, it would be political and community, community suicide of the town and any developer to not include the public access and consideration of the farmer's market in a proposal. What this RFP does is to allow a developer flexibility to come up with a proposal, which also meets all the guidelines that we have established for public accent, access. Ultimately, all of us will have many opportunities to provide input on any development plans, just like the Northeast Mobile Health and the BD Thurmond De-Entertainment Proposals. And in the end, we'll have the final vote, whether to move forward on any plans. And just one recommendation I strongly encourage is to include a deadline for accepting responses to meet the cleanup guide deadline and to give the town the time to discuss the vote on any proposal of forty to five to sixty day duration seems about right. Um, that way, there would be time for public comment and we could still make the November vote. And just as importantly, I'd say we need to come up with Plan B. If there's no reasonable development proposals accepted, then what? I suggest a Plan B, take the form of Tannery Work Group Recommendations. That will allow the town to move forward, um, with plans to the entire site. And the question regarding liability and VRAP and the Brownfield Grant to clean up the site is the town put someone to work exploring ongoing cleanup liability, like our legal counsel. A couple of questions are, is there a difference of transfers of cleanup liability to developer and the town? If someone buys versus leases? Another question, if developers included and clean it process, they, and they own the property before the certificate of completions issued, does that change the liability question? Um, I encourage the Development Office and Select Board, when evaluating proposals, continue to hold strong guidelines created by the community when considering proposals. Jeff Scott. Anita also sent one in, I haven't laid today, um, going to paraphrase it and not read the whole thing. Um, Anita starts with, um, wonderful reminder of the time she's put in the town since nineteen ninety-three and numerous positions of the town, including Tannery Site Redevelopment Work, Tannery Work Group, and of course, her, Camry, uh, Camden Select Board. Never mind her current activities in the Budget, Energy and Sustainability Committees that she's been involved in. Some of the points that she makes is, um, about the redevelopment work group is, in the twelve years since that two thousand eight report, there's definitely been an evolution of a number of levels. Um, the failure of marketing and sales attempts to change changing status and understanding of environmental issues, the understanding of long-term liability issues and the refinement of collaboratively generated community recommendations based on community needs. Thus, underline, the recommendations from the two thousand eight report are dated and should be adjusted based on those changes. She further goes to point out that therefore the, uh, Camden's greatest asset and thus greatest attractant is the quality of life to provide for families and then, and, and it's, it's people. Frankly, we look into the future when we include enhancement of community building assets in our economic plan. She says, goes on to say that RFP is the logical next step. I agree that it is appropriate to put out the RFP, looking for the right combination of development plan, use proposal, uh, remediation of the entire site will be most appropriate when informed by ultimate plans for use of the various portions of the site, best arrived at in collaboration with developer. But the town's evolved goals need to be further clarified and codified in the RFP. The plan as it has evolved now includes public spaces in addition to the river war. Um, they need to clarify in order to be accepted and embraced by the community and pass the public vote, rather than be publicly gobsmacked, uh, for the town embarrassment, I hope we can avoid. Let's see, the next point she made is, I understand the town administrators want the town's financial investment back and want more job opportunities, but that investment is the taxpayer's investment. The taxpayer's important desires are therefore relevant. The public advisory vote did not actually reflect the public's desire, as it was all or nothing choice, development or park, with no option for development and park. Still, the approximate fifty-fifty result was revealing. Camdenites want fulfillment of the community's needs from outdoor and from informal gathering space, including farmer's market and for public playground. The redevelopment committee provided a, uh, useful blueprint for the combination of these elements. What makes sense to retain ownership, uh, uh, is to retain ownership of the entire property and lease a portion of it to develop. The, the town thus would and should accept the ongoing liability for future environmental fines, releasing it to developer there from, while appropriately accepting responsibility for the town's historical inattention to environmental abuses. Uh, the applicant should be given clarity on exactly what space and arrangement the farmer's market, community gathering space requires, and a minimum, how many square feet that, uh, these may need. Let's see, there was one of them, um, she, again, "Any request of developers' design later expertise for public spaces should be, should include appropriate and clearly stated compensation in truth. We are actually asking for help with design layout to cite remediation for each area that will be appropriate for that area's future use of win-win." Uh, the developer would have the advantage of being able to arrange the entire site to best benefit the developer's vision as well as the town's. The more, more successful we can make the developer, the better off we all are. The town clarity will provide security both for the developer and for the town. The intense public interest in this lot is not a secret, nor the history of its contention, the past embarrassment to development proposals and public vote requirement. Thus, this renowned history would serve to dissuade all but the bravest, the most community-minded, or most naive developers, yet the public vote required is not revealed in the RFP. End of letters. So, to the matter at hand, which is the, uh, discussion on this, uh, this RFP. Taylor, go ahead.
Yeah, boy, I think that, um, definitely with Scott, I really appreciate those. Well, I thought. Yeah, boy, I think that Jeff and Anita Scott, I really appreciate those well thought out letters. We received a number of letters on this, on this issue, which is not a surprise. It's, it's, as everybody knows, for a number of years, been a hot button item, sometimes a contentious one. And more recently, only have I been involved in hearing all the sides of it. And while it's, you know, been talked about for, for a decade. I think, I think Jeff and Anita really hit the nail on the head in terms of sentiment moving forward and open-mindedness that's important, you know, do our due diligence to make sure that we explore all the options. And that an RFP certainly does make sense so that we know what's out there, you know, perhaps there is a brave creative developer who has an idea that, that we simply haven't fleshed out yet. And I'd like to, I think it's important that we do our due diligence to, to make sure that if there is an idea out there that, you know, perhaps is a mixed-use space that works well for, for everybody, both from an economic standpoint and a green space, public access standpoint. I'm, I'm supportive of it. And, and again, would point out that while we would put out an RFP, and if we get proposals back that we'd like, nothing moves forward without the, the vote of, of the citizens on this piece of property. And just from my, from my personal opinion, you know, I'm not opposed to seeing that the Tannery Park end up as, as a hundred percent green space. I'd be perfectly happy if that is the end result. That being said, you know, I, I wouldn't be happy finalizing anything until we felt like we've turned over every rock and made sure that we've informed ourselves as best possible. And that's why I'm, I'm most supportive of putting an RFP out to make sure that, that we all, we do feel like we've done our best to make sure that there isn't a fantastic opportunity that we haven't at least given ourselves the option of considering.
Allison.
Oh, the Tannery. You know, there, there's a, a lot of legitimate pent-up bad feelings in the community surrounding the Tannery. It's a sore subject for me too. Many people have felt over the years that conversations and plans have been either not inclusive. They've been discussed behind closed doors. They've been, they've, they've been one-sided, they've gone around and around. I personally, not so many years ago, when I was first getting involved in town things, was asked not to bring up certain issues at public meetings. I was asked by, well, I won't get into it, but it was frustrating because these, there, there are so many strong feelings in the community that town staff have at times, and the select board sort of shied away from having conversations and putting maybe everything out there because it does get, it is easier just to not have the conversation a lot of the time. It would be easier for all of us. My week would have been easier if we hadn't put this on the agenda. It impacted, you know, many hours of, of time with my kids, talking to people who are thinking, you know, the select board is going to sell Tannery Park and to an evil developer and check the farmer's market out. No, that's not what we're trying to do. But for many years, people have been promised at various times that they would have an opportunity to submit a proposal. And we haven't given them that opportunity for a really long time. I think we should stop using the word developer right away. From my perspective, this RFP should be, I, I wanted it to be as open as possible because I want somebody to feel comfortable submitting an RFP that says, hey, I've gotten together with three different nonprofit organizations, and we want to lease this little section from the town for twenty years to create a reuse store or to create, you know, a, a winter farmer's market. Or, hey, the farmer's market decides to get together and, and calculate, you know, how much they might have to pay in rent somewhere else or some kind of thing, and they say, hey, just sell us this little part. Or, you know, maybe there's a business or a few out there that say, hey, I'm willing to create a few eco houses and build a playground. And in the deed, I will guarantee forever public access to it. So I would encourage everybody to kind of get together at this point and, and brainstorm and talk about, hey, do you have ideas for this? Do you have ideas for that? Maybe we can submit a proposal together to feel comfortable submitting multiple proposals, to feel comfortable submitting a proposal that says, this is my, you know, what I'd really like to do, but I'd also be willing to do X, Y, or Z if the town could be flexible here or there. So I think the goal here is to make sure that the community can benefit as much as possible from this place. And it will really help us to know what is an actual option and what is just pie in the sky thinking. Maybe there is no unicorn proposal out there. And, and, and we need to stop saying, well, we're not doing this because we're waiting for some, you know, perfect developer situation to come to fruition. So I would say that I'd like to put a deadline on it of something that gives the community enough time, something like six months to allow a lot of conversations to take place, to allow us to come back and say, hey, this is what we've gotten so far even. And, you know, what else is out there? And to have it be a really, really open process. Because that's where, as, as upset as the community gets about this or that, or different people have the things that they want or the things that they don't want. The thing that creates the most resentment, I think, in people is when they don't feel like it was all open. So I think every one of these documents or proposals should be, you know, public, you know, really somewhat immediately in the public sphere, and we can work out some of those details, but and maybe we do need to take a little bit more time to firm up what the actual process will be and how we can handle that. But that, those would be my comments.
Mark. I've had a lot of thoughts about, as Allison said, taken a lot of time this week to think about this, talk to people, read all the letters. I was on the select board when the last work group was, was working. I went to a lot of those meetings. I don't know that, I think Allison was there. I don't know that any of the other people were there. Allison was everywhere, so before she was on the select board, it's and tremendous meetings, tremendous, a lot of people went there. And the three things that I remember coming out of it were finding a, some sort of retail, whatever kind of space. That's the word I'm looking for, my mind is blank at this point. Some sort of, of working space for people, construction, housing, something. And then a third was for a park area. Because one of the things that came up in conversation, there is no public park in Camden for, unless, when the schools are in session and school playgrounds are not accessible, there is no park for preschool children in Camden. And that was an important consideration as part of using some of the land there, a place for families to go had preschool children, where they could have a park to play. And I must make a side statement here, that the new swing set at Lake Beach is wonderful. It's great. And then the third part of it is a permanent home for the, for the farmer's market. And those are the three things that all came out very strong out of the proposal. I'm concerned about the RFP because it's about selling it with, as I read it, it's about selling it or leasing it with hopes that some of those other things will be involved. And I'd like to see more than just hoping and wishing that some people come in. I like to see some, that there is some sort of guarantee for the farmer's market to have a permanent home. One of the things that has happened since they've been there now, I think this will be the third year, fourth year, third year maybe, is they have found that their business, and this is a farmer's market, one of the oldest in the state, they have found that their business is much stronger at this location than it ever has been in town before, at the, at the two other locations that I remember it at. And I think it's, it's very important for them, and it's very important for us to have that farmer's market here. I find it's a very, very important thing for a town to have. I'd like to see some guarantees that we maybe keep to those wishes that the town, the people that were interested in participating at the time were that we have participation for the farmer's market, a guarantee for that, guarantee for a park. And then we have the property where we, you know, hopefully a developer or someone can, can take it and do something creative with it. I'd like to ask Jeremy, is it, are you able to adjust the, what are your thoughts on the RFP? And since all this has come up, in what ways can, do you think it could be adjusted? What other, one of the things we've talked about, there have been some offers, there are some thoughts. What are your thoughts on the best use for this property? You're the one that spent the most time working on this, I'd like to hear you comment.
Keep it to the select board, may Allison, do you have another comment?
I mean, I guess I feel like Jeremy's job is a little different than, than doing that right now, and that it is our job to weigh in. And the, the first thing I would also say is that there is no pass, there's nothing we can put in that RFP that guarantees the farmer's market a place. We do not have the right to guarantee the farmer's market a permanent home at the Tannery. As much as I personally, I can commit personally, you can commit personally to say that as a select board member, I will can never, cannot foresee myself supporting, putting something out to voters even that doesn't include this provision. But we don't have the right to guarantee town property, only the town voters can do that. So maybe at the end of all this, we'll say the very best thing that we could do is to give this, or, you know, give, maybe the town voters want to vote on a one-hundred-year lease to the farmer's market or something like that. But that has to come in the form of a proposal that we can put out to voters. And, and maybe that will be the best thing for everybody.
Right. Well, put it out, so that's where we will put, Taylor, you have any comments?
Nope, I renew my original comments and, and I agree with my colleague.
Now, we have to agree, remember, we, to me, I, I don't have all the background of years of the baby, some of you have in terms of the frustrations, which are clear from the people in the town, various entities and who have ideas and direction. I, I don't, I would not support anything that would blanket those ideas or otherwise eliminate them. I really see this, and from my experience on, this is very common, and you get to town uses of properties, there's the situation that occurs, and a lot of frustrations can rear their ugly head for good reasons, by the way, this has gone on way too long. To me, though, this as a, having played in the formulation, and I agree with Allison, don't use the word developers a four-letter word. You, you really need to look at, we're, we're just gathering information. Information that we will absolutely share with the public to get input on, but there's other things we need to do in parallel. For example, one person mentioned to me the idea over the last month about this pavilion idea at the, you know, for, at, at the, at the Tannery. And I, and I said, you know, it's, it's an idea, great, but the, what came up, but the most important thing that came out of that discussion was proceed in parallel with other activities. Why we're doing the work with EPA, and this could impact and help it actually, we could be looking at this information whenever may come and not come from this RFP, as well as other, other things, park, farmer's market, pavilion, these other things need to be looked at in parallel so that the voters have something to chew on. And I, that's all this is about. I wouldn't like, I wouldn't support personally, you know, just wiping it out with a, you know, some one big development. I think that's too myopic. I, I think there are, I have seen so many creative solutions where uses by the public park, uses by a, or, or a farmer's market, and a related type of development or building or whatever, work magically and, and well. But the, the, the possibilities are endless as any person in the town has their own opinions, what those options may be. Some of the letters we, we, we read and, and received, some of the conversations I've had too with people, that the, they're, they're endless, we, we've got to funnel it down. But we, I believe strongly, we also owe the entire town to say, I, I want to be able to turn to them and say, we did our due diligence. We looked at all the, the, the ideas. And this is what it's boiled down to, these two or three, what do you think, what do you feel? I, I, it is no such thing as a perfect RFP, by the way. I, I think that you can craft all the words you wanted, that you think might qualify it. I know a people want us to put in the restrictions. I think that's premature. I, I think that this RFP is, is, is fairly well drafted. I, I think, I think it's important, remember, was this select board, the five of us who discussed bringing this forward in some meeting not so long ago, when we were talking about our town properties, we said, why not look at an RFP? So that's one of the reasons why it is on the agenda tonight. It's not because we're trying to rush something, but in parallel, Jeremy can talk a little bit to the EPA, DEP activities going on in parallel. All of this is going on in parallel, that's the way it should be done.
Let me, let me just say, I understand what Allison said about, you're right, we can't guarantee within there, you need to guarantee a farmer's market. But I would like to see some, make sure that any developer understands how important those things are to the public that really took the time to speak up about this property the last time it was under serious public consideration.
Well, I can tell you, having responded to a number of these things in my career, there's no person out there who's going to walk into Camden and not know the history of what's going on. They are not that naive, trust me. That would be, that would be walking in with blinders on. You gotta let the buyer beware in a sense, and make them do their due diligence, Allison.
Yeah, I mean, I look at this a little bit like when we've looked through applicants for town manager or for the manager of Midco Solid Waste, or yeah, you do get some proposals and some resumes that are just like, what? You know, it's like they don't even seem to know what position they were applying for. And I'm, maybe we will get some of those, or maybe we'll just get no proposals at all. I mean, look what happened with the MET RFP that the school board put out. So it's, I think we'll, we just need to have a little bit of faith in ourselves and in making sure that we have a public process so that those, those things just won't really be considered seriously. It would be, I think Anita put it well, or, or who, you know, there'd just be total political suicide for anybody to propose that kind of thing. But at this point, I didn't even know about, you know, this, this pavilion stuff was frustrating because there are all these side conversations going on, and that's kind of what we're trying to, and it's not fair to the people. There, there are lots of ideas out there. And so it's, it's not fair for members of the select board or town staff to be kind of entertaining these, some of these really great ideas and, and wonderful offers that are coming up to us. But then, you know, and then just throw that on an agenda sometime and say, yeah, you can build a pavilion, or you can do this. We shouldn't just make all of this public, and that's.
Thanks, that's perfectly stated, Allison. Audrey, you had your hand up a minute ago.
Yeah, we've got some comments on YouTube.
Okay, let's hear them, Janice, I'm going to read them.
I think Janice is having some feedback issues or delay.
Yeah, she has a delay going on.
Okay, so it's Tom Resick, he's asking why were only certain letters read and others paraphrased? We were assured that all submitted comments were to be read. Jeff Scott's was read in full, mine was given barely a sentence. Since we can't attend, all comments need to be given the same treatment.
That's a tough one, that's a fair. Struggled with how to do that because when it's all written, how do you?
Well, the, the problem we had was, but it's Tom's good comment, and I'd be happy to read them all. If we want to, we could do that, it'd take ten minutes, fifteen minutes. But the, the, the Toms and a bunch of others were, were in the packet for quite a while. They were in for days. So the public in, we had a chance to digest them. That's why some of these others, we, we could have, we could have just as easily drawn the line at the, I don't know, noon time today and said, you know, if you don't have it in, we're not going to, you know, get it into the packet. We've had, we hadn't come as late as five PM this afternoon. So that's why there were some were paraphrased. If it's, if the board wants me to read them all, I'll be happy to read them all. I, I don't know that that's going to change anything, but I'd be happy to do it.
I mean, I think that's the problem with not, I've wanted for a while to be able to have people come into the meeting like, like is done in in many other towns so that you can have your three minutes and we can divide it up by, you know, select board versus the public. I think Tom makes a good point. It's a tough issue. I mean, maybe we should, what does Taylor think? I can hear.
Taylor?
Yeah, I understand. I mean, the, the reality is, this is the, this is the crux of the problem with, one of the cruxes of the problem with holding meetings on Zoom. You know, it's all something that we're, we're, we're figuring out as we go. And just from my perspective and the way that we've handled this in the past over the last couple of months is that comments would be submitted by a certain deadline to be included in the packet. By being included in the packet, they are on a public record. They give us a chance to review them in the packet, to give the public a chance to review them in the packet. And to continue to be inclusive, if people send in comments that come in later than that, they aren't included in that public packet, so they'll be read out loud. That way, there, there is some inclusion. I'll just say, I had a chance to read everything that was included in the packet ahead of time, which was the idea. And appreciated the ones that did not make it in the packet being read so that we could hear those and hear everything.
Yeah, that's well, well, well put. And I, from my perspective, this is a a select board meeting, a select board needs to make a decision on information we received and input. I certainly read Tom's and others, Eleanor's.
As did I.
Read them completely. I was just, I just had heartburn with trying to put a deadline, a time deadline. Now somebody said you couldn't get it in by 5:00 o'clock on the day the select board made, so those were well, in one case, that that late one was was also paraphrased, not every word was read. But they are in the packet now, but I, I, that has been our procedure. It's unfortunate. We are in a difficult situation. We don't know when things may change or highly may change, but the, the, to the problem that's run, I know other communities run too, where they a lot of people who had submitted information to speak at a Zoom meeting. Then people, other people said, well, why wasn't I invited? I, you know, I sent an email to John or Sally last week and I, why wasn't I invited? It's a very complicated situation. We apologize for that, but I, I, I think we're, I think we're handling it pretty well. Allison, I'm sorry, Mark was first.
I, I just wanted to mention, it's a bit unfair to allow the record, the, the people that have written early to be in the packet and not be read and then have people to respond late. And because you could actually, people start to go, wow, I won't get read if I'm in the packet, but I will get read in the meeting if I write in late. It sets up a precedent that's not very good. I think we should read, read none of them.
Um, I think that this isn't so different from regular select board meetings actually, because it's, it is very common that we get letters on things and we don't read those all at the meeting. And actually, a lot of people may not even want that. I think our practice generally for the, our normal meetings has been that if somebody requests that it be read during the meeting, that we've done that, but otherwise it's used as you know, just public input that we take into consideration and I think that varies by person. So the best thing here, in, in my opinion, would be that it was clear that Tom did ask that his be read. I think, why don't we read Tom's? I don't feel comfortable going ahead and reading out loud everybody's because that may not be, you know, unless that was specifically asked, I think that maybe that should be our policy, that if somebody asks for it to be read, then we do that and if not.
I'm certainly happy to do that. I think it's a, it's a good idea, so. I read them all, I'll just read, Tom did request that his be read, it's the record, the others, you're right, did the state is the same, so I'd be happy to do it. Let me just get to it. My little thingy here. One second.
Can I, we've got another comment. Herbert Peters has said, just read the letters. You are spending more time discussing it.
We're gonna read, Tom Resick's letter was requested. Camden Select Board, please do not issue the RFP being considered to seek a developer to decide the future of the Tannery Park. Terry Park has become an invaluable public space as a community park and the home of the Camden Farmer's Market. The Camden Farmer's Market in Tannery Park, quote, has been a huge success as has become a great community meeting place, even without any improvements. Quote, Tannery Park is in constant use by young children, learning to ride the bikes, families walking the dogs, parents. The kids having a catch and people social distancing themselves while having a cup of coffee in opposite ends of a picnic table. Neighbor kids even had started to create a complex mini mountain bike circuit on the big dirt pile before being chased by the police. For three years, for three years, the town of Camden offering this property to a developer for free. That was followed by an attempt by the select board at the time to sell the property, Tannery property for an ambulance depot after the ambulance proposal was scuttled because of neighborhood protests. Decision was made by the board to finally have a community-based community committee come up with a possible use. The Tannery Work Group was appointed and represented in the cross-section of Camden Community and was funded by the select board. It's been more than two full years working through all the possibilities, concepts with the help of a town hired facilitator and landscape marketer consultant. The option of selling the property developed was among the many options thoroughly weighed. After more than two years of monthly meetings, the three community forums that Tannery Work Group came to a consensus report with a multi-use park, farmer's market and possible commercial space solution in which the town of Camden will retain ownership. On March 21st of 2017, Attorney Work Group final report was presented to Camden Select Board at the Select Board Meeting July 17th, 2017. The Select Board voted 5-0 to name the Tannery Site, quote, Tannery Park. The application for the $200,000 grant the town received from the EPA states. Because of the site's optimum location, the town of Camden envisions it being redeveloped in a park of community space as well as a year-round farmer's market, is likely that a portion of the property will also be separated and redeveloped for the commercial use such as restaurants, boutique, retail stores or small businesses. Any RFP, end of quote, any RFP that is issued should follow that formula and therefore only include a portion of the property and leave, leaving the larger balance of property for park and community space to be developed with community. The $200,000 EPA grant funds appropriation need to be discussed by the community before any negotiation with a developer for their use. I also feel inappropriate to issue an RFP at this time until newly discovered environmental issues remaining have been further evaluated and presented to the neighbors and community. Thank you for the careful considering my comments before voting to issue an RFP for the possible sale of Tannery Park. Respectfully, Tom Resick. Anyway, that's, he didn't request, we didn't read it. I, I, again, back to, I think Taylor's point, I would agree. We, the input we received from these other individuals in well in advance was, was, you're gonna give us a timely enough opportunity to read them all and understand them. They're all, they are all in effect in the public record. So they're not reading them as a, as a, we could do that. We were in an awkward situation right now and we're doing the best we can to affect all this input. Thank everybody for their input. I certainly consider it when we consider this RFP and I'm sure the other select board members do too. Allison.
I do think that Tom, that, that did remind me of, of a couple of things. I do think it would be appropriate to post any reports that we have relating to the tannery and environmental issues or otherwise. Jeremy did a great job compiling a lot of reports before. Actually, some of those reports were reports I had asked for from the town for years and couldn't get them for some reason. So we should, I do believe we have a few more things now that we haven't had a chance to fully you know, some of it's inconclusive or whatever, but that that should be posted on the town website so that people that do want to kind of dig through it can. They do not provide all the answers, but they provide a little bit more of the story of, you know, some of the things that we did or didn't find. And I would just like to address that we did get some comments. Eleanor specifically, I think, felt understandably frustrated because she had recently asked, you know, what's going on with the, with the tannery and and, you know, she got a response that it was, we were sort of in a holding pattern. And we are in a holding pattern depending on how you want to look at it. And I will take responsibility for after hearing about some of this pavilion talk and different things, I said, you know, what happened to this RFP that was worked on so much and this open process that we were supposed to have that I was really looking forward to because I personally am sick of hearing things through the grapevine or, oh, who's this that's, you know, has an idea or doesn't or developers that do or don't. And so I said, well, can we please just put this on the agenda? And I don't think that filtered through and Bob being chair and Audrey or whoever else sometimes requests to get things on the agenda, work out and sometimes they don't. But I don't know that Jeremy maybe had known that that discussion took place at the time. And it was kind of a.
That's correct.
You know, so I, I just, like, if I were Eleanor and I had received that email, I would have felt, and then I saw the agenda. I would have felt like, what the heck is going on? But I think it was a miscommunication and.
Okay, that's, well, well put. Jeremy, you're on, you're on mute.
Thank you. Boy, I mean, everyone said a lot and I certainly value and appreciate everything that all the commenters, what they had to say and what both committee working groups did over the many years on this. You know, I think everyone understands this has been discussed at great, great length for many years, going back to the 2008 Apollo Site Tannery Redevelopment Work Group and then followed subsequently by the Tannery Work, Working Group. I, I will say, it is important for us to move this along. We cannot, you know, we need to start entertaining something. And whether that's be a proposal from someone who wants to do housing or a group that wants to do a farmer's market or whatever, we need to move on this. We can't six months, I heard Allison mention six months, that's going to be a challenge. We need to start moving right now and I appreciate Tom's comment about the environmental stuff. As everyone knows, we did do, the EPA funded some additional assessment in November. It took a long time for, there were some lab issues with EPA's consultants. It took us a long time to get that final report done. The final report done wasn't done until I think March 10th is when it is the date on it. And then all of a sudden we spiraled into COVID. Working, I'm continuing to work with our environmental consultants on this. I will say, I mean, a $200,000 cleanup grant is not a lot of money. And I, I do have concerns. I think the consultants have concerns that we're gonna, it's gonna be a challenge to cap the site, clean up the site with the funds that we have. Now, what I think people need to understand is, and we're working on this, is there are things called remedial action guidelines and these are called rags. And there is a rag for every type of use on a property, whether that be a park user, a construction worker, and when we say a construction worker, we're referring to someone that could potentially dig into the soil. Where there's also rags for commercial users, there's rags for residential users. That is how we have to come up with a cleanup plan, right? And not, all of those different uses are not the same rags. They don't have the same levels that we need to meet. So we need, we need to understand what, we need to move this along. And so what I've asked the consultant to do with this new data is they've compiled it and they're, they're putting it all together now. And they're gonna have, be able to show us where the exceedances are. And then I asked them to compare in an area what I'm referring to as the riverbank, Riverwalk area and more of an upland area. So that they can, as, as they're working, trying to come up with how we're gonna be able to clean up the site and how we're gonna be able to have conversations with EPA and DEP on certain contaminants. We need to, you know, so I asked them to come up with this two, kind of define the two areas. Both areas I included park users, both areas I included construction worker because a construction worker is someone that is gonna be digging in the soil to remediate the site. That is a construction worker. And I've looked at residential on the upland area, asked them to come up with the rags for the residential area. And I've asked them to come up with more of a commercial use in the upland area. That's moving forward so that we can at least have, really understand what our limitations are on this cleanup. It's going to take significant dollars to clean this site up and we have $200,000, actually we have less than that because we've been doing work on this. So we need to move this along. I think I got some great comments, listening to this, the whole conversation. And I appreciate and value everything that Tom Resick said, Steve Gold says, Nina Holland, Beatty, Anita and Jeff. I think, you know, this has been a community discussion for a long, long time. And two working groups came up with two different things. The town voted, you know, the town voted at town meeting to use the guiding principles. But they also said, not at a town meeting, but here are these Tannery Work Group recommendations. I have tried to include those both in this as attachments. And I would add that this is, for the most part, why I didn't tweak it much, because it did go through a public process a year ago when CDAC reviewed this and we had 30 or so. I just actually watched that meeting the other night. You know, from a year ago, it was very informative. It's the same what I'm hearing here. But we need, we need something. I can open this RFP up more so that we can, people can think outside the box more and it not, so that it's not really looked at, looking to try to get a development proposal from developers. Because I appreciate what Allison's saying, there may be nonprofits in the area that may have a desire for a portion of the property. I have talked to, I will say, I've talked to a couple of people, I'm, I guess I'm not gonna call them developers anymore. We'll just call them people that, you know, have roots in this community that have an interest in doing something on that. Both of those entities understand farmer's market's importance to this town. They understand that the Tannery Work Group had their recommendations. They understand that there are these guiding principles. So I've tried to include all of that as much, as best as I could without overburning them. You know, and, yeah.
Jeremy, can you just comment briefly on why this RFP should or should not go out right now?
I think it should go out and needs to go out because we cannot wait for, you know, how are we gonna have these discussions on what happens with this property if we don't have any proposals in front of us? We may find something that someone submits that absolutely makes everyone happy. And if we can get that 45 days from now or 60 days from now, then all of a sudden, we can really formalize this ABCA, our Community Relations Plan and the cleanup plan to take into account everything so we can move this forward. We need to start having this, this discussion. We can't get any ideas from any potential users until we say, community, people out there, we need some, we want some developers, we want some folks to give us a proposal for this. Because, you know, I'm thinking that this has to happen in November, a town vote in November that we need to actually have. My hope is, is that it's not a divisive issue in November that the community can really rally around a great project or great use of this site that we can move forward. We've got until September, October, September 30th, 2021. We can get an extension and EPA says they're willing to work with us on that extension. But what, that means that the whole site is cleaned up and capped. And that we have a certificate of completion and compliance from the DEP and this is whole site is enrolled in a V-RAP.
Right, right.
And we're good. And see, Bob, I've looked many, many ways. I've looked at it. You know, people talk about a third, a third. You know, people talk about a third, a third, a third, if you look at that, what was proposed by the working group. It really wasn't a third, a third, a third, if you're talking about land area, if you're talking about the use of the property.
Right.
You've got three use, then sure. I mean, I could envision that something, you know, I could envision three house lots with small. You know, similar compatible houses to the houses that are in that neighborhood along Washington Street with. The tree line street, you know, those trees are very important along that 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 street. I could envision that along with the, you know, an area for the farmer's market and a parking area and a park out back. Yeah. Vision, but this town, the town needs to, you know, we can't have these discussions about this pavilion. I've heard, I heard the same discussion, but it wasn't someone coming to me saying, hey, can we put a pavilion here? It was these discussions that are happening out there and all of these people, people need to, we need to coalesce. Around something or at least the idea that we need to start taking ideas and proposals formally so that we can move them along.
Agreed.
To our grant obligations, honestly.
Yes, all connected. Alison, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I I heard that Jeremy was resistant to the six month. Time period, but. It feels to me like if I hadn't made a fuss that maybe this wouldn't even be on the agenda for tonight, so it's hard for me to hear. That there's this massive hurry at the same, the reality is this might drag out for another decade, everybody that lives in this town knows that's the truth. It it started way before 2008, it started way before, this has been going on forever and ever, so. We can accept rolling applications, it may turn out that. We don't use any of that money to the farmer's market is enjoying that property right now as it is, we don't have to do a single thing. To it, so it may be that we need that EPA grant to clean up the part that we know 100% for sure. We Camden residents are going to have forever, which is the Riverwalk. That may need, the riverbank. Likely does need some work, there's erosion happening, we may need to widen that easement a little bit, so. It's we, to say that we have to have a town vote as part of the whole EPA grant process. Not, not realistic because just like you said, $200,000 isn't. A lot of money, it's not going to decide things one way or the other, so. We we don't, maybe, maybe we will stop accepting applications at some point, but I think six months is act, when you look at how long things take in town. People are talked, there's all this coronavirus stuff, six months is a reasonable amount of time for, I don't think it should all be secret and sealed necessarily. Until then and then on, you know, month six, we open it up and we say, oh, now we choose.
Yeah, I don't think we need to worry, I know, should we specify time, six months, nine months, whatever, we're going to do what needs to get done to do it right, period. Audrey, did you want to add anything before I have to revert to select board to make extra or not?
I really just want to have very clear consensus on what the process will be. You know, as proposals come in because I don't want to end up with a situation where Jeremy and I are stuck in the middle where. We've got proposals that are coming in and we've got requests that certain parts of them remain. You know, that we get occasionally developers who want to speak with the select board, they're not ready for. It being a public conversation and then we're kind of in this situation with what do we, what do we do, they want to speak to the select board. Select board feels uncomfortable about it, so I just want to make sure that we're very clear from the beginning with this process as to. If somebody submits a proposal, they know from day one, it's all going to be public. We'll post them on a rolling basis as we receive them on the website or whatever it is that you all want to do with them, I just want to have. That level of understanding from the very beginning so that we're all in agreement about how this is going to work.
Yeah, you walk in a little bit of a difficult area there because it it seems to me that if you get proposals coming in. You really get to the point of going to go discuss in public when when the proposal's actually been formulated, sometimes. A builder might come to you and say, I want to talk about whether these options will will be considered. And that's part of the due diligence of getting to a proposal. Once a formal proposal is submitted, then then you're more in the public domain as far as whatever the proposals are at that point in time. But there can be discussions from the results of an RFP. Whether that any entity may want to have with the town, with Jeremy, with you, Audra, or maybe even with the select board. To formulate their final proposal, those those discussions are very normal and should happen.
But I just want to make sure that you're all in agreement about how that's going to take.
Okay, Alison.
I'm not in agreement at all about that, not for the, not for the tannery, there is, I understand that in nor in. Many normal processes, there there would be an executive session here or there or. That there is a need that sometimes arises for that, but I feel it's toxic for the tannery. Because. Anything that is going to succeed here is going to be possibly subjected to. Semi ruthless public scrutiny and should be part of a conversation with the community, so say. A proposal maker should be comfortable saying, hey, here's my proposal and. That it should, it should, that gives an opportunity for the for the community to say. Hey, I have this idea that might dovetail with that, did you see that cool proposal that got put up on the on the website? It's the, it's going to have to be a different process than the normal development. Process, you can't have in a select board form of government, a developer shouldn't be able to. Have like formulate a proposal really in private for a property like this with a select word because. The decision isn't gonna, that we can't say what, well, what this would be considered or this might not, we can all give our personal opinions about what the community might be up for, but. I I don't think, I just think that's toxic for this process.
Okay, well, I guess I would have to disagree with you because there are there are conversations that occur that are not about. Anything more than their interpretation of the document, their interpretation of what to be included in the proposal. Those conversations go on all the time and they must go on, otherwise you might as well not send out the RFP.
That's just a, that's just a question and answer process that is available to any. Person or community group or developer that wants to ask Jeremy a question or Audra a question about about process. That's not what I'm saying shouldn't happen here, I'm saying that I don't believe that executive. Sessions with the select board should be a part of this.
I don't know. Taylor.
Yeah, that's a tough one. I think I tend to agree with with Alison in that. You know, obviously, if if an entity. Needs to get some clarity on the background of the property, you know, clarity on what what the intent of the RFP might be. Certainly, it's appropriate for them to come into the town office or whatever and have conversations with Jeremy and or Audra. That I don't have a problem with, but I do agree with Alison that in this particular instance, since since the select board doesn't have the ability to enter into a contract. Like we would in other real estate type deals that would require an executive section. It is just a trap of sorts for public scrutiny, that's not going to be helpful in moving this forward, I think, so. You know, just to be clear, I think, obviously, if there's questions and you need to clarify and answer. Whoever that entity is that may have a proposal should have access to town staff and that's certainly appropriate. But when a proposal is formulated, I do agree with Alison, it should be public and open and that any. Formal discussions with the select board should be, should should not be held in executive session.
I can see developing, separating the select board, but again, all my comments were referring to the process that goes between when the RFP gets out. And the proposal is formally submitted. And that time period is all kinds of conversations that go on, doesn't have to be the select board, but with the town, that should be clear, they can have those conversations without going to the public.
Certainly.
And then, but once it's a proposal, it's an official document, so that doesn't need to go to where it has to be evaluated with all the other options, I I have no problem with that. Anyway, what is this, is like, do I hear a motion for this RFP or not?
I would move that we approve the release of the RFP. And that we reserve the right to modify it or if you, you know, addenda. At future times and that we accept proposals on a rolling basis with the understanding. They are to be made public and that entities may also. Really, what do you call it? Modify their proposals or submit multiple proposals throughout the process as community input comes in.
Well, but she made a motion, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, in discussion, my question to the discussion is, when you said rolling, you mean somebody can submit an RFP, a proposal next year?
Uh, no, for, I would say for six months. But.
Yeah, I I can't support that.
What do you want?
I think you, when you said an RFP to entities, you say, I want the proposal submitted by a certain date, that's common practice.
But I think it's going to be open throughout.
Any developer or any, bad word again, any person wants to do something, it doesn't take them six months to formulate.
Yes, it does sometimes for the community to work.
I've never seen one take six months.
What deadline do you want?
I've done hundred million dollar projects.
What deadline are you proposing?
I'd give it sixty days most.
No way.
Bob, it doesn't preclude you of us from getting other, you know, people. Giving us other ideas or options in that period of time. This is in response to this request for a proposal, I mean, that's just, that's my comment, I I don't know. I I will say, and I know you guys are having a discussion on this, I think Alison, you said the RFP, I hope we can change that to an. AR and ARFP, that is, I want to come, I want to tweak this a little bit based on the comments I've heard from you folks and from the public.
That's why I said that we would reserve the right to modify it.
No, that's fine, Jeremy, I was only referring to, is this RFP going out with a submission date or not?
Yes, I was hoping to have it be 45 or 60 days.
All right. Mark.
I just wanted to add what with Jeremy, I was going to mention that Jeremy had mentioned revising it a bit, I'd like to see it revised before it's sent out. And I I don't think there's a problem saying 60 days to see for the first run of what's coming in. Move forward and then the thing I want to remind everybody is, no matter what comes in, no matter what happens, nothing gets approved until the town votes on it. So we can, we can get a little, you know, too much in the weeds here, but the town will make the final decision on it, so I think. Sixty days right now is fine, as long as it's rewritten a bit, Jeremy can make his tweaks that he wants to and then puts it out. And then we see where we are.
Right, well. Audrey, I just have Audrey cover two cents.
Um, I I don't necessarily need, I I would say though that maybe this is something where you do want to put like. You know, 60 day timeframe on it and then when we're kind of coming towards the end of that, you can discuss it as a group again and decide. For another 60 days, 90 days, however long you decide, so that's kind of my only comment on the timeframe.
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
Happy that, I'm happy to keep it open and if we see that something's developing, we want to give another six months, fine, that's what we'll do. But I I guess I want to clarify, one second, Mark and Taylor, I just want to clarify the motion because Alison already said about, you know, changing, I heard. Changing commenting, Jeremy, as you thought, we go change the RFP based on what he's heard, we can discuss the time limit. At 60 plus plus plus, that's fine, but I also heard comment about. Are we proposing to Jer, I heard Mark say, bring it back for discussion again after it's revised, is that what?
No, I did, I did not say, I said allow Jeremy to revise it and put it out.
I got it, thanks, Mark, I did want to clarify that. Taylor.
Um, yeah, I think Audrey nailed it and it sounds like Alison's okay with that, but I was, I was just going to ask the same question, realistically. If we get close to the 60 day timeline, I feel like we just haven't. Received the level of input that we would hope for, that, you know, we're not necessarily nailed down to to November. Get there and we just don't feel like we have the right option.
That's correct.
Obviously, it would be great if the perfect solution comes up, but.
I agree, Joe. Audrey, you ready to hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, there are more comments on the YouTube. Livestream, a lot of them are from people who have already submitted letters. So I think, you know, it's your choices to what, do you want me to read?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, um, Herbert Peters, read the letters, Eleanor's is really short. Even gold, it was certainly the consensus of the most recent group that the 2008 environments are out of date. The market deserves more emphasis in the RFP. Stephen Gold also wrote, this whole discussion deserves a real town meeting. He also wrote, seems to be an implication that the 2000 isn't going to do it, parking market could be the cheapest clean, might need no digging. I'm going to mute Jeremy because of the feedback. Anita Brosa Scott wrote, could the select board please discuss the option of leasing the land versus selling the land? And how the liability for future environmental issues will be handled. Herbert Peters gave a thumbs up, Stephen Gold wrote, the tweaks to the RFP should be reviewed at a select board meeting.
Yeah, okay, Alison.
No, no, it it's my understanding and maybe that's some, one of the tweaks that needs to be made, but I think the RFP. Absolutely, like the types of proposals we would consider should absolutely include proposals to lease. I'm not willing to restrict it to that, but we would certainly welcome. That type of proposal, I would assume.
I, you know, I would totally agree, I think the question, good one, by the way, about liability of lease versus sale. But not addressing that at the RFP stage, we'll address that downstream when we get to something, if if there's something serious we want to consider, we know how to do legal due diligence, so I'm not worried about that, so. What I'm hearing is, correct me if I'm wrong, Alison, your your motion is to go ahead with the RFP, modify, Jeremy, modify it. Initial 60 day limit, which can be rolled out. Whatever time, but don't, don't limit to 60, maybe it's 90, we will have to figure that out later. And. And, and when proposals, formal proposals are passed the whole discussion process, then that's a public document.
And for them to be posted.
Wherever you publicly, yeah, but that's when, yeah, all the discussions with the town, with Jeremy, with Audra, blah, 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 that's all going to go happen until there's an official. Signed piece of document called a proposal submitted.
I mean, sure, but it's, it's not, not every, the world isn't always like that, so this official sign, blah, 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 like some. And so I would hope that that we can can foster an environment where. We take advantage of public input and that any person that wants to propose something. Welcomes the opportunity for these things to be posted so that they can receive feedback, because anybody that succeeds here can't be somebody that is opposed of public feedback, so.
That's clear, that's clear, so you agree with that, one second, Mark, do you agree with that as a motion, I think, Taylor, you seconded it?
Yes, I do.
Okay, now, Mark, discussion, go ahead.
One, one more question, Jeremy, when are we going to have the final, when is the public going to be able to see the final chemical report? Is that sometime in July?
No, that's available right now and I do need to get it up on the website and I have shared it with some folks who have asked me for it, so I have shared it. What's happening right now is ransom, our QEP for this site is taking the day. The exceedances that we have, the exceed of the chemical or the contaminant. And they're pairing them in tables and they're color coding them, comparing them to tables to the rags that I discussed earlier. So that, so that we'll have, so that everyone and we'll should be able to show them on a map. And I'm I'm hoping, I just got to them today, I was hoping to have that by today and they just get to it. So that.
Mark.
Now, let me, let me just say, the reason I asked, I knew, I knew there was something going on, what I'd like to see is the 60 days start when all the information is. Start when all the information is available to the public. Uh, once it's posted.
That should be right away anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
I just want to make sure that.
There's no delay, there's, I agree. So anyhow, we have this, we have this motion and seconded, any other further, is there any further discussion? We'll go for roll call, vote, vote. Taylor?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Mark?
Uh, Jeremy had one more point he wanted to make, I want to hear what he wanted to say.
It's a little late, sorry. Mark?
Hi.
Bob, I, four zero. Jeremy, you'll get the last comment, go ahead.
Yeah, and what I will do, Mark, is I'm going to get the day of the report out to the public and put it on our website. I can work on that tomorrow with Janice. So we'll get that on the, on the, on the website. Of, on that will be, that, I mean, it shows all the exceedances, it's just not in a table form. Right, that I, that I need to use with DEP and EPA for a conversation.
Moving on to the second item on this agenda, which is the approval of the Sagamore Farm Boundary Survey. Which is a proposal for surveying a site that apparently is not surveyed accurately. Uh, and I believe the proposal addressed for ninety-five hundred dollars to survey that site.
Correct, yes.
Any questions in the board? Mark?
I, I think it's important we do this, I think, maybe this, this property's been with the town since something like nineteen forty-six, I think we can. Uh, let's work forward to getting this done a little quicker than we do with the tannery, even though it's been this nineteen forty-six.
Well, at least Tannery has a survey, this one doesn't, that's amazing how much information is missing there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Okay, uh, Taylor?
Uh, I move that we approve the Sagamore Farm Boundary Survey.
Second and.
Oh, second, motion made in seconded discussion?
Um, just a small point that it's not, we ended up with this property because the town really wanted it, we needed, um, gravel. For roads, and so this was, this was part of, um, a deal with the former owners, they gave us a. It was, um, Chauncey Keith. Um, they, and, and really well-known donors to the town on a number of things. So it's not a property that we ended up with because somebody didn't pay their taxes. There, the town had this longstanding need for gravel because we had kind of depleted at that point. The options for the Hosmer Pond Road gravel pit, and so a lot of the stuff that was dug out of Sagamore Farm is actually like. Forms the base of some of Camden's roads. So it served a useful purpose for a, a while. They did a lot of damage to it too, but.
Yeah, true.
I'm in very much in support of knowing where the boundary lines are and not having to rely on, you know.
Yeah, totally correct. Talk about the first step in anything, the first, the first thing to do is you have a survey and, and, and. A boundary survey, which this one is, I believe, and, and later a topo, an accurate topo, topographical survey, but that's another issue. So, um, again, a discussion on this motion, not hearing any, go for a roll call vote, Mark?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi, I also, no, sorry.
That's all right, Bob, I, uh, four, four zero, go ahead, Allison.
I forgot to, we, did we talk about where it's gonna be funded from?
Good question, thank you. Let's just get that clarified from Audrey.
I was just planning to spend out of our professional services budget line.
Oh, there's my, there's enough money there?
There's enough money there, yep.
Great, on to, uh, uh, item eleven, which is the approval of Camden is blooming event for. Uh, weekend, Friday and Saturday, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh of, which is two weeks from, a week from this weekend, correct? Correct, and this, as I understand it, is, um, is just a sidewalk event, is that correct?
Um, that is correct, Bob, um, this is to, um. It's in your packet, but it is to close off the sidewalks, to do similar what they do, Camden is blooming on Mother's Day. And they also would like to block off some parking spaces on the landing in front of. The Chamber Building where they'll have some music out on the, um. And then they also were hoping to be able to, I think, yeah, I think that's it, I think that's everything.
That's what I thought. The, uh, the previous record, well, discussion about the parking. Thing we do had talked about is may occur at a later date, is that correct?
Um, that's correct. I worked very hard with them to try to figure this out. Um, we're still working on it, it's, they wanna, I think, move out to July. Sometime, um, to do that, and we're working with them on that, and we'll get there, um, hopefully soon.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion from the board to accept this, um? Sorry, Allison.
I'm sorry, but I saw in there like the Harbor Park and Village Green and, um.
Oh, yes.
We don't have, what's going on with the, we can't approve anything in Harbor Park. I, I would love to, but, um. Don't want to step on.
Yeah, it says live music by local artists to be played on the Village Green, Harbor Park, Town Landing in front of the Chamber, which will be supported by cabbage. I can reach out to them and say, you know, you gotta work with the, um, library, um, folks on Harbor Park.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think it's great, um, and I, but, and I want to be clear that we are, I am personally, and I. Think everybody probably is okay with live music on the Village Green. And even if it includes amplification. Um, which in the past has been. Um, sometimes not allowed, my understanding, but, um, again, I don't see it in the deed anywhere. That would, you know, anything that would restrict amplified music, I don't know if that's part of their plan, but, um, just to avoid. Um, any issues later on of people feeling like something happened that wasn't. Allowed, um, maybe the select board should just touch on that, or Jeremy, you can let us know more specifically what the plan. Might be.
Um, yeah, they did not say that they were gonna use amplified music. I mean, if they're talking about local artists. Um, and you know, this is from ten to two on, what is it, Friday, the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh, from ten in the morning to two. You know, and they did, they did not say anything about amplified music, so I can't imagine that amplification of. Sound or music is gonna be a problem from ten in the morning until two in the afternoon.
I mean, anybody singing with a microphone would, would meet that specification, so I, I would just say that that's fine, I. I don't think that we should place restrictions on that if there is an intention to do that.
Sounds good.
Uh, any other comments in the board?
Yeah.
Motion?
I make a motion, we approve the sidewalk blooming event.
With the condition that the library trustee, Mark, of Park?
Yeah, with the condition that they have to contact the library trustees for use of Harbor Park, because that is under, under our purview.
Thank you.
Second.
Great, um, motion, second, any other discussion, uh, roll call, vote, Mark?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
And Bob, I, two, four, also, uh, four zero, thank you very much for that. The last item on the, on the agenda is the update about the renewal energy project between the. A power purchase agreement and the relatively new development of buzzword, net energy billing credits. Um, Jeremy wrote on insert in the packet to kind of explain what has evolved. And I presume you've all taken a read of that, uh, as to what the timing has been since almost a year now. When we started into the process of looking at, uh, at, uh, you know, the solar options for the town, wound up in a cohesive report by. Rich Roughgarden issued in October, um, the legislation that has occurred. Uh, it was actually approved in November, as I recall, but wasn't formulated into a, the plan of the net energy billing credits. Until like earlier this year, I believe Jeremy was when it actually came to fruition. Um, it's the new, the main became the forty-second state in the country. To adopt net energy billing credits formulation idea. It's, it's extremely popular throughout the country. Um, and I think Jeremy, uh, explained how we got to this point, and I think what's, what's, what's happening, Jeremy has talked to. Three of the principal players in this marketplace who are all contemplating. Uh, embarking on net energy billing credits versus. The previous approach, which was typically a power purchase agreement, which we're very much aware of, because we have one at Sagamore Farm. And this is really, um, just, uh, if anybody has questions about how that, how it works, but, um, Mark, go ahead.
Just have one question, um, obviously with the, the changes in legislation, this is the way to go. And just to clarify, this will give us, uh, a hundred percent, um, renewable energy for the town. Is, am I correct in that, Jeremy? When, if we make, and the second part is, do we have a timeline?
Yeah, that's, would be a function of what we say tonight, in terms of proceeding with the development of more, uh, fruit, uh, flesh on the bone. So the same can be made, because remember, this, these type agreements are typically twenty-year. That's all, that's gonna have to most likely go to the public. So we need to think about the timing of elections and how to do that as part of this, Mark, so it's, I, I mean. Uh, you have to agree with a lot of comments that have been made, uh, by our energy committee and others, and said, you know, we, we're, we're really. Uh, it's just a question, is there any questions about the difference in approaches? We want to make sure we kind of understand how it works. So that Jeremy can continue, uh, he's very far along in the process of talking with some of these, um. Suppliers, uh, on a more detailed proposal from which a decision could be made. And Jerry, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but a very short time period.
Correct.
So down to answer your question, Mark, and now, but we're, 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 we're on the edge of the cliff. We, we can, we can move fast.
That's good.
Answer your question about a hundred percent, yeah, in, in all effect, you're right, today we're seventy-five percent, so I believe. Audrey, that's where we're at in terms of, our recs, but this would put us, you know, uh, a hundred percent.
And the, the one other question I have, when we were looking in previous times, when we were looking at. Um, some of the discussions I have, we were looking at, having our own solar farm or something, maybe making. Some renewable energy available, because it's not just the town energy that we'd like to. Um, it's, a lot of the energy is by the people that live here. A way for town people to be a part of this.
Right, Jeremy?
Um, that's a, that's a great question, um, Mark. Um, I wish there was a, a easy and great way for. Resident property owners to tie into a community, I mean, so what this does is. You know, traditionally, the old PPAs, like we have, and like Lincolnville has, lots of towns have them, especially with like revision energy. I mean, the town has the piece of property, you work in a group with someone, they come in. They do the install, and then for a certain number of years, um, you know, and then, then you end up getting it, and then it's your responsibility. These are, these are now what's called these community solar projects, um, and what the idea is, is to get multiple entities. Um, to gather like towns, um, to sign in with a developer, a solar developer, and then, um, you work with them on a site off, off. Outside of your town. Um, the struggle, I'd look hard, um, to find a program that. Brings residential homeowners into it. The challenge is, is it's tied to your property. And so, you know, me selling, if I sign into this agreement for twenty-some years, because it's a twenty-year agreement. Um, you, you really, it doesn't really work, um. Very well to, to bring community members in, um, because who knows what's gonna happen. To their house or their property or their life in the next twenty years, and you really can't, it's really hard. Really hard to do that. It's a great idea, um.
But I, but to Mark's point, there, there are parallel strategies, Mark, I think this one would be, the net energy billing credits would be. Limited to the town, the town, its uses, but, but there are other options that could play. For the businesses and residences, probably not net energy billing credits. That's, that's, that's the subtle difference, that's the only difference.
I'm just concerned as we move towards, uh, Global Council of Mayor's information, you know. Use of town, and a, a lot of the usage was not so much the, the town itself, but a lot of the residences and things like that. See where the future is going and where, where we can move forward there.
And there are, there are options there, it's just, like I said, subtle differences, probably not net energy billing credits because of the twenty.
I understand that, I just think that we may need to find a way to help people.
Right.
Uh, move forward.
I will say that our office is permitting far more solar than when I, um, first got here two years ago. I mean, we, our solar projects being permitted out of our office, um, routinely.
For re, for residences and businesses.
For residences.
Right, 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 right. Um, and this, by the way, this has little to do with the parallel, parallel effort to reduce our energy demand. Through performance contracting and these other things that are going on in parallel, so there's solar involved there too, so. This is just the, this is just the macroscopic look at the two, approximately two million kilowatt hours that the town. Uses every year between our town operations, snowballs, etc. Anyway, but the, Allison, go ahead.
Um, can we try to get an answer sometime about what does, uh, Camden resident do with a broken solar panel? Or if you take solar panels off and you need to recycle them or dispose of them, or. That was something that, when we asked Rich Roughgarden, I was shocked that he didn't have it, not that it's his responsibility to have. Known that, but it was illuminating that there just weren't that many great. And I'm curious, any, if we've gotten to the point yet in Camden where any panels have been on. Homes long enough that they need to be replaced, or, um, if that's something that's come up yet, but.
I'm, I am aware of one home that did remove the panels, excellent question, I don't know what they did with them, because as far as I know, to this date. There is nothing in the United States that's been established to determine what we do with solar panels. And right now, in Germany and France, they've got multi-billion dollar programs to answer that question.
Right, so is it, I mean, I don't even know what, you have to keep, do people just slip them into their yellow bags little by little, or? In, in all of the conversations that you all are having, um, we should, we should come up with an answer, and we should also kind of. Demand that, I, I think that there's a producer extended responsibility. Involved here that.
There is.
You know, okay. Okay, whoever you are, you're gonna keep installing things like this in Camden or wherever, or on behalf of the town anywhere. We want to know that you're willing to take them back at the end, um, or something, because we just, it has to be consumers that start to put more pressure.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a, it's a huge issue and, and excellent question. Um, if, if you witness also, uh, this past year, when. Uh, certain places were hit by hurricanes and their solar farms were severely damaged by the hurricanes and. Maybe the panels were smashed up, they're still trying to figure out how do the environmental cleanup. Because of the cadmium and lithium that's in the cells. Um, it's, it's, it's a great, excellent question, but we can certainly, by the way, also one of the reasons in my mind. Why a lot of these companies have gone away from power purchase agreements, because they've got a lot of pushback from. Entities that say, we don't want to deal with decommissioning expenses of a solar farm. That's huge, and that's, that's exactly what you're asking, but I think it's a good question, Allison, we can certainly reach that. Uh, that question with whomever we decide to deal with and say, where is this thing going in twenty years? Beyond my lifetime, but still in twenty years, that's, you know, that's. Well, trust me.
Think, think positively, Bob, think.
All right, nineteen years, but anyway, um, no, I was just, uh, yeah, excellent question, but I think it should be asked.
I mean, even if it's not us that would have to be doing it, it, we are still, by investing in solar, we are. Some way, and we should be. Whatever pressure.
And the industry needs to face that, because they're, uh, from my friend in other states, they're stockpiling the glass and stuff in certain locations. Until we can figure out what to do with it. What it sounds like to me is nuclear waste, and I you put in a barrel, you stick in the mountain, that's not gonna work.
And also, just in a practical sense, I would like to know for Camden residents.
Yep.
And whoever else, or, you know, it pertains to midco-solid waste, I don't know what would happen if somebody showed up at midco-solid waste with a solar panel. I, I, but we, it's not gonna be that, we, we need to have an answer for practically. Not just, hey, industry, you should do better, but practically, what do you do if your solar panel is broken? not just, hey, industry, you should do better, but practically, what do you do if your solar panel is broken? And where does it need to go?
I totally agree.
Revision must be able to answer that.
Well, they, they are, they're addressing it. They know what's hanging, they know the develop, these uh, solar companies know that this is an issue and they have to deal with it. Maybe we can find out some way as part of our agreement to find a place where our residents can just uh, give them the solar panels to stockpile in their stockpile.
I mean, there must be a place somewhere, because
I don't know about Maine, but I know there are places in the country.
But no, there must be something that happens when they break, when, or when they go somewhere. They don't just tell every resident, you have to hold on to it forever. That's not, that can't be what's happening. There must be a
Bottom line of this item, Jeremy, to me is uh, it's suggested the board, just the board knows that um, Jeremy's being tasked with suggesting, he's being tasked to get us um, some recommendation for the net energy billing credit option uh, that would, that they, you feel is the most uh, of, of most, the best one for the town. Yeah, whatever number kilowatt hours we finally decide to, to buy it at, at energy billing credits. That agree? Again, we'll, we'll revisit this when Jeremy has the data that we have to vote on.
It has been a little frustrating because we've talked about this so many times. And, and I, you know, we invested all that energy in this Rich Rough Garden study because everything before was speculation. And we kind of agreed that we would just do pretty much what was agreed recommended by the report that we commissioned. And then after that, we had this lengthy talk where we said, we're gonna put out a really open RFP that's kind of solved. Speaks how, you know, how can Camden produce two to ten or whatever the megawatts are. And it was gonna be like a two week timeframe. We're supposed to get it out and and then it just went away. And then there are these murmurings. And I appreciate that, that, I appreciate this being on the agenda so that we could at least talk about, okay. The world changed, the world changed. This is why let it be out in the open. So it doesn't just, because to me, it really felt like whatever happened to what we decided before. Um, so thank you. And this makes sense.
Thanks so much. Okay, with that, Jeremy, go get it and bring it back to us in three days. Um, but uh, seriously, this is urgent. We should move, there's absolutely no reason why this can't move quickly.
In my
But meeting, Bob, maybe.
Okay, Jeremy. With that, uh, we've completed the normal part of our agenda. I'd like to, um, adjourn the select board meeting and convene an executive session for agenda.
Don't move.
Second.
The second mark, um, um, roll call vote, Taylor?
Hi.
Alison?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Bob, I four zero. Thank you. Um, let's terminate the um, the feed um, uh, to the public so we can go into executive session, please. Jess and